Committee of the whole. Committee of the whole is back in order. We are here with the Department of Corrections officials. On section 10. Any questions on section 10? Okay. If there are no questions on section 10, section 10 is adopted. Section 11, Department Youth Affairs. Any questions on DWA? If none, that completes DWA. 12 was completed yesterday on section 13, Office of the Attorney General. We'll go ahead and have the representatives from the Attorney General come on in. It will be in brief recess. In order, now with the section 13, Office of the Attorney General.
Just a point of order, Mr. Chair.
Is your point of order?
My point of order is just to establish for the record, I was in my office waiting to come over and then I heard the gavel, you know, fall to bring session into order. I just wanted for the record to state, was there a quorum at that time?
No, there was not.
All right, thank you.
All right. On section 13, questions on the Attorney General? You have no questions?
Can we just, just a minute, Mr. Chair.
Okay, it will be in brief recess.
Thank you very. Thank you very. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to get a short synopsis from the Attorney General. I know you came into the office, you know, in mid-budget, basically. One quarter of the budget had been expended and so forth. Do you have an accounting of expenses paid out of the office budget that were over and above the allocation of your, or paid or encumbered, contracted for and so forth, that were over and above the office budget?
My understanding, Senators, that we do have a breakdown of the expenditures since fiscal year October 2000, starting October 2006. In terms of a detailed listing, we can provide that if necessary and based on our, based on our analysis of the local fund expenditures to date since our coming into the office. If I could just have a moment. Our understanding is that for our fiscal year 2007 appropriation, this is again focusing on 100% local funds, was $5,728,038. The allotments that we received to date was $3,214,634. Our expenditures to date was $2,305,971. Outstanding encumbrances amounted to $462,727. If you were to add the expenditures and outstanding encumbrances, that totaled $2,768,698. As of April 4th, 2007, the Attorney General's office has spent only 48% of its total fiscal year 2007. These are local fund appropriations and our office has been extremely careful and deliberate in the expenditures to date for obvious various reasons. We are trying very much to live within our fiscal year 2007 budget appropriations.
There's a, there's a question that is creeping up, I guess, on the radar screen, I guess, with regards to retirement fund contribution, that there is a difference between the retirement fund contribution that was set by law, adopted, I guess, by the body versus what the actual rate is that has been established by the retirement fund. Which rate are you paying?
If I could have a moment, Senator, please. Senator, there is, as we understand, a pending question that has been brought to our attention, the Attorney General's office, with regards to that concern or that particular issue which our office is currently looking into at this time. As we stand, however, right now, to answer your question, our understanding is the rate is 22.65%.
So this is the rate and I think the actually established rate is something in the number of 22.95 or something, there's a difference of some tenths of a percent?
I believe you're correct, Senator.
Okay. And you, so again, the question here is because should any of the Attorney General's staff wish to retire? That they are not able to retire until we resolve that issue, just like they're not able to in their line departments, I understand. So you'll find yourself in that, okay.
Okay.
The cut that's being proposed is 180,000?
That's correct.
Yeah. Now, when you make the cut, is the cut in that amount, is that cut going to come out of projects, programs that are funded but not implemented so that we really don't have the expense? Or is it going to be ongoing projects, programs, personnel that have an obligation to pay and you're going to have to reduce the cash outlay by 180 in order to meet that cut? How would that cut be achieved?
Senator, it was our intention this morning to respectfully request that the proposed budget cut not be implemented for the Attorney General's office for a number of different reasons. Every division within the Attorney General's office, starting from, of course, prosecution, civil and solicitors divisions, our child support divisions, have a tremendous amount of responsibility and we do have some statistics to support our position. We also walked into a situation regarding prior obligations, including, for example, of course, the Hauser decision and there are two judgments that we're referring to, one of which is half a million dollars at least, the other which is, we've calculated approximately close to $100,000. Those are judgments that the government acknowledges. There have been other considerations. We've also discovered that there are attorney's fees that are owed as a result of litigation, which we're going to have to factor in as, and not only into this current fiscal year budget situation, but because we won't have enough, obviously, to cover all of this, it's going to have to be looked into in our fiscal year 2008 proposed budget. There are also other issues, including our security at the Attorney General's office. We, of course, invited the Senators for a walkthrough because we believed it was very, very important that our legislature be aware of the security issues at our office, given the nature and the confidentiality issues involved with the cases that we deal with. The physical environment itself, it was also something that we had shown and discussed with the Senators. We also need to take a look at situations or cases in which we may have or may require witnesses, whether they be expert witnesses or witnesses off-island, that we need to bring for, whether they're criminal cases or even civil cases, it depends. And that's something that we would factor into as cases arise. West law, for many of our legal research individuals, understand that that's a necessity for this particular office. And so, again, it is not uncommon to have a five-figure estimate for any given year, depending on, again, the type of issues that are being researched. And so, in terms of recruitment of personnel and staff, I can tell you that we have not filled vacancies as quickly, perhaps, as they've been released or terminated, so to speak. But that was done intentionally on our part because we wanted to get a handle of our fiscal year 2007 budget. But we have identified critical, critical positions for this office at all division levels and have factored that into our current fiscal year 2007 budget, which would still allow us to live within our means. And so, and again, I can get into more detail if you wish on that.
How about your rent? There was an issue in rent. Are you current on your rent?
Our understanding, Senator, is that, and we have communicated with the Department of Administration on this issue, all the paperwork or documentation has been provided by our office. However, I believe there is still, in terms of the cash disbursement, that there is still pending, there are certain invoices, as I understand, that are pending.
Do you know how far behind you are in the disbursement, in paying your rent?
If I could have a moment, Senator. They're, we're calculating or looking at the numbers right now, Senator. And just as a, for clarification, as we understand it, with our fiscal year 2007 budget, there was a specific provision that set aside or earmarked rent.
373.
That's correct, yes.
Yes.
For the
For rent.
Local, for the local portion or share.
Right.
Right.
Senator, just for your information, as the invoices are coming in, for your information, Senator, as the invoices are coming in, they are being forwarded to DWA for payment.
Right.
It is our understanding that a portion of those outstanding rents had been paid for by the child support federal funds that we had earmarked for that. As far as that portion coming from the local appropriation, it's our understanding that the landlord still has not gotten those.
Okay.
That's an answer to your question directly. As far as dollar amounts, we're trying to calculate that figure for you.
Okay. Now, just if I could go back to that question I asked with regards to the payment of the retirement fund. Has anybody asked the Office of the Attorney General? There's a, basically a standoff with regards to what is the legal requirement for payment on the retirement fund contribution? One law says the actually set rate and then there's a specific appropriation based upon a rate adopted by the body. Has anybody asked the Attorney General, whether the retirement fund or anybody, the governor for that matter, to resolve that issue? Is that?
Yes, Senator, it's my understanding that there was a specific inquiry or request for legal opinion made.
Okay.
I believe it may have, it was from the Department of Administration, if I recall correctly. However, the retirement fund has also made mention of that same concern.
Okay, and is there a status? What's the status on that?
The status, as I understand it, Senators, that we do have one of our assistant attorneys generals taking a look at the matter.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, because, you know, again, it not only impacts the Attorney General's office, but the entire line agency, basically, of the government of Guam. Because my understanding is some of the autonomous agencies are paying the actually set rate and some are paying the statutorily, I mean, both are statutorily set. And I guess that's where the resolution has to be worked out in, in terms of that issue. So, are there any other obligations that the Attorney General has that, other than rent, that has not complied with due to budget constraints?
I'm sorry.
Are there any contracts? Any other contracts that the Attorney General has in which they're behind in the terms of the contract for payment due to budgetary constraints?
Well, we are aware, again, Senator, that there are certain contracts for professional legal services that we're engaged in prior to our coming into the office. We've estimated that it's approximately over $116,000 in total. We've been informed that these funds were encumbered for these particular contracts, but it is our understanding that they have not been processed or paid out.
They have not been processed for payment?
Yes.
And they were encumbered from your operational budget? Because there was no specific appropriation for those contracts?
That's correct. There was no specific appropriation, to our knowledge, for these particular contracts.
Now, they were encumbered out of your operating budget. What was foregone, was anything foregone in your operating budgets to make up for that encumbrance?
For our purposes, our concern is that, again, the need to hire attorneys and other staff and we're trying to set priorities in the office in terms of our needs to service the community. And so, in some of these other issues that we've indicated outside of personnel, for example, again, going back to the Hauser, the Hauser judgments, both one and two, I have actually said in the past that we have met, for example, with counsel and Mr. Hauser on this and the meetings have been productive on the part of the Attorney General's office. We would like to make a good faith effort in trying to resolve this particular situation, which is going to require an outlay from us in some amount that we believe the office can afford to make, given our current fiscal year 2007 budget appropriation. Other issues that, that in response to your question, in terms of the SABR, which is, SABR, which is the technical support for the aposty maintenance and operation for child support, it is our understanding that there were certain funds that were encumbered to pay for outstanding invoices that may amount approximately to over $200,000 in terms of the 33% local fund portion of the services. And to clarify, our West law, our West law situation, Senator, the, those funds, again, are not encumbered funds. Those are direct costs as the service is utilized.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Thank you very much, Attorney General.
Thank you.
Senator Calvo?
Good morning, General Intiaka.
Good morning.
The, I want to go back a little bit to the Hauser settlement, if I can recall. What is a judgment at this point?
The
Dollar amount?
Hauser, Hauser 1, this is Hauser versus the Department of Law, Government of Guam. Hauser 1, which, again, does not have any encumbered funds, amounts to approximately $500,000. Hauser 2, which, again, does not include or there are no encumbered funds for this, we've estimated may amount close to $100,000. This would be for attorney's fees as well. That would include a portion for attorney's fees.
So total, I don't have my, the 600?
For both, could be as high as $600,000.
$600,000. And I know in our, in our previous, in the budget discussions for fiscal year '07, this was not accounted for.
That's our understanding, yes, Senator, that this, for Hauser 1, the stipulation and order was filed in December of 2006 and that's when we became aware of it. And it is our understanding that this was not discussed or incorporated in any way in the fiscal year 2007 budget appropriation.
Since this is quite a significant number, how have you accounted for, at this point, for fiscal year '07? Is this, has there been an arrangement then? Or are you moving towards the arrangement of having this thing paid off this fiscal year?
Well, it would be impossible for us to pay off the entire amount using our fiscal year 2007 budget. However, again, we want to make a good faith effort or payment towards this particular judgment and judgment of some amount. I mean, this is something that, again, given the discussions we've had with Mr. Hauser and with his counsel, we want to, in a sense, resolve this situation without litigation because that would just be more costly all the way around and try to come up with some kind of a resolution or settlement or negotiated payment plan. But it is important that we address this situation, given its current status.
So at this point, it's still under negotiation with Mr. Hauser and his attorneys?
Yes, if you're asking, do we have a
For the pay, for the
That's correct. That's correct. But the discussions are, it is under negotiation, but we're moving towards wanting to try to, again, make a good faith effort or payment on this.
Now, with this good faith effort, obviously, and again, I'm not going to try to, especially if you're in ongoing discussions, I'm not going to try to peg a number to you, unless you feel comfortable in giving us a number.
No, not at this time. But certainly, it's something that we are looking at in terms of our current 2007 budget.
Okay, so then, what are, what is the planning at this point? Based on, again, I know there's probably a certain range that you're looking towards in regards to making this good faith settlement for fiscal year '07. What preparations or what adjustments in the current budget is the Attorney General's office, at this point, has made to account for this good faith effort? The reason I'm asking is I want to, this thing, obviously, because it was not in the budget, it's, you know, it has some impact. And with that, and whether it's, you know, 50%, 25%, 75%, I want to get an idea of what preparations the Attorney General's office is making to account. Obviously, if you're going to, if this was unaccounted for,
Right.
then there's going to have to be an adjustment in the areas of the budget that were accounted for.
What we're doing, Senator, and this is part of sort of the balancing that we're trying to achieve with our current fiscal year 2007 budget, is when we came into the office in January, we spent a considerable amount of time, even communicating, of course, with BBMR, a budget analyst, on trying to understand where we were at with our fiscal 2007 budget appropriation and our expenditures. We also met internally with the deputies to talk about their personnel needs and other staffing needs to try to get each of the divisions to a point where they can competently provide services to the community. And then we just, we looked at other operational costs involved. We understand that in the fiscal year 2007 staffing pattern, that we had 65 vacancies that were, that were basically on the staffing pattern. We have identified what we believe are 44, 44, 45 critical positions that we need to fill. And so, we're making some adjustments in that regard and, you know, projecting forward to the end of the fiscal year 2007, trying to see what monies we have left and calculating and factoring in with these other, with the Hauser stipulation and order funds that are necessary, the contracts, professional legal services. It's trying to calculate what would be an appropriate amount to satisfy, obviously, the invoices that have come before us. With the Hauser decision, Senator, because there are ongoing discussions, it would, it would be difficult for us to give you or pinpoint a number because what we're trying to do is, again, work out what we hope to be a, some form of a payment plan, but, again, keeping within our budget.
Now, okay, you mentioned there's, at this point, there are 65 vacancies.
It's our understanding that we have 65 vacancies, given our proposed staffing pattern and 45 of which we've identified and wish to move forward on in terms of the various divisions.
Do you believe these 45 vacancies can be filled before the end of the fiscal year?
Well, we are actively recruiting, Senator. I believe a good portion of it could be. And if I may clarify, some of these, we've agreed to have opened strictly just government-wide. In other words, it's not open to the public. It's, and so, we're not looking at, you know, we have agreed to bring in and recruit government-wide with some of these vacancies.
What is, oh, please.
Senator, just in response, the AG correctly said that we identified 65 vacancies in our office. I think the point needs to be made was that when we first came into office, we had a staffing pattern that included numerous vacancies, more than 65.
Was Eric, was Eric one of them?
You never know. No. Multiple pages of vacancies. What the AG did, along with the deputies, was identify those core personnel that would be needed in each division to handle its operation. So from 100 or so vacancies, about 100 or so vacancies, we pared it down to about 65 that we thought were critical to the operation of each division of the office. When she speaks of identifying 44, those are like the bottom line, very critical needs in the office to include attorneys to handle the specialized cases that we deal with, attorneys in the criminal prosecution side, attorneys to service the government agencies that we want to service and by law are supposed to provide those services to, investigators and so forth. So what we did in our due diligence in trying to capture or to understand what we had to use and also to, in response to your question about the Hauser situation, we were trying to get a handle on the budget, identify what was actually critical and after everything was said and done, how much do we have left over to try to settle this thing with Mr. Hauser and his attorneys? To make some good faith effort and payment to show that we're trying to resolve it.
If I, if I may also add, and just because this is something that, and a matter that we have continually tried to inform the members of our public and, of course, our leaders about, is, again, going back to the tremendous amount of responsibility that the Department of Law or the Office of the Attorney General has. And with regards to prosecution, for example, we are talking about, at a minimum, as we understand understand it, you know, 4,000-plus filed cases that are pending before the Superior Court. We are, in essence, talking about the life and liberty of human beings that are at stake and victims and their families. And so when we come before you and we talk about recruitment of personnel, it's very, very critical to serving the prosecution role in this, in our office. We have a tremendous need for experienced prosecutors, investigators, and victim advocates. And their only way that we're going to, again, achieve our goals and make sure that we provide a comprehensive response to victims and their families is to get these personnel on board. Again, the majority of our victims, when it comes, for example, to criminal sexual conduct cases, are our children. We have a serious drug problem on Guam. We have been coordinating with the U.S. Attorney's Office and federal officials, who are in tire need and desire to work with us, so that we can try to attack and aggressively prosecute the drug cases that we have. We are working with our Guam Police Department on, you know, the cold, our cold case, cases that have been further investigated, I believe we have, and our chief prosecutor can correct me, close to 40 homicide cases that are pending. And so the list goes on. And so I want to, on behalf of the Attorney General's Office, stress the importance of what we're truly talking about. It's just not numbers, but we are truly talking about the human, you know, human beings and lives of many families, our victims, their families, the defendants involved. With the family division, we have anywhere between 800 to 900 juvenile cases that have been filed before the Superior Court. We're talking about cases involving violence in our schools, cases of child abuse, physical and sexual abuse, and neglect cases. In child support, we're talking about at least 20,000 children that the Child Support Division is responsible for ensuring that payments get out to these children and their families. We have approximately 13,000 cases that are filed with our Child Support Division. We are talking of about over 1,000 cases per caseworker. We're on the average, it's 600 cases nationwide per caseworker. So these are quality of life issues dealing with children. Again, I speak about the basic necessities, monies for food, shelter, clothes, and the like. And with civil litigation, if I may, our civil litigation solicitors divisions, we are talking there about quality of life issues. Everyone is aware, of course, of our environmental issues, dealing with the ordot landfill, mental health, education, public health, CPS, APS, labor, land use, water issues, tobacco litigation, clean air issues. We're also very concerned, of course, about the ability and the desire on our part and intent to provide legal services to at least 27 government agencies, 32 boards and commissions, many of whom have contacted our office since January, asking us to please, you know, provide them with legal counsel. And so we definitely want to do that and have been working on trying to meet their needs. But again, we need the personnel to do so, and we also are addressing the military influx that we're expecting in the next few years. And so there will be a number of mitigation of environmental impact issues that we're going to be dealing with, negotiations, agriculture, natural impact situations, conservation efforts, and the like. And so those are, again, just some of the various issues that I just want to put forward, just because I like to stress on behalf of the office, the critical nature of our needs and the personnel.
Yeah. General, let me, again, I'm asking these questions, but I fully understand the magnitude of the responsibilities of your, you know, I've had an opportunity to tour the facility, and aside from law enforcement, you know, one thing that became very evident to me is a social service function, especially when it came to child support, and the volume of, again, the caseloads that you, that goes through your office. I'm very appreciative, and that's why I'm asking these questions, because I want to be very careful as we move along. We're at this point of deliberation, and the rules have been, at this point, that when we are to entertain an agency, there will not be, we will only entertain amendments to decrease appropriation even further. And once we get through to the end of this particular portion, the body will start making adjustments. And, you know, if we find savings here, or there's a revenue enhancement there, then we will look towards areas that maybe, you know, if we could restore, and look at those priority areas. And, you know, again, I fully understand your function and the heavy burdens that are put upon your office in dealing with issues in law enforcement and social services. So you have an advocate here. I do, again, I would like to, if you could provide us a listing of those vacancies, and you have 65, you mentioned 45 are critical. So I'm wondering, too, if that would be possible also in this listing, if you would highlight the 45 critical areas that are of necessity. By the way, what is the, Tony, if you were to add up the 65 vacancies, what dollar amounts are we talking about?
If we could have a moment, Senator?
Sure.
And just to clarify, included in the, in those numbers are child support, child support positions, which, of course, as you know, is 66% federally funded.
And that's why I want to be very careful. I think it's important to look at what positions have federal, federal participation.
In terms of the 65 vacancies, Senator, the dollar amount would be about $3.1 million, which would include, of course, salaries, benefits. And that would be for the 65.
Again, I'm not going to request it for now, but then, again, that's important, too, as well. Of these positions, again, you say there's federal matching participation.
For the child support positions, yes. And if I can, again, stress what Chief Deputy Alberto Tolentino indicated, which is, when we first walked into the office, we had pared down tremendously what the original proposed staffing pattern was, quite a bit. So we've brought it down.
And I do understand that you came in, you know, you took the ship, not from the very beginning. And again, we have an allotment analysis put out by the AS400 as of March 13, so it may have changed a bit. And there is a little bit of a difference, because when I look at the Department of Law AG's office, the numbers that we have here are strictly on the general fund, which, and not including the local matching fund requirements. But as of halfway through the fiscal year, on the just the general fund appropriations and the release of allotments, you're at about 58% to 59%. And my only concern is now is, because, and again, I'm not too sure how much has been encumbered, but moving forward, you know, we have, we have the remainder of the fiscal year, and I just want to be very careful that you, that whatever, if there is a cut to occur, that it does not put you in an untenable situation where you're going to run out of spending authority.
Right, yes.
Just a bit of a caution there. Anyway, that's all the comments and questions I have at this point.
Thank you. Senator Placius?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, as it is right now, I think that the AG, without, of course, we have to wait until the end of this discussion to make a motion, I guess, to at least maintain status quo, but I'd like just to do, to share some notes that, you know, all this, the investment that this body has made with respect to law enforcement, the police department, or other regulatory agencies, revenue and taxation, public health, actually would be a waste if the prosecution arm of the government of Guam cannot handle the incoming loads. And just two days, three days ago, this body actually passed and restored the, or rather, maintained status quo, not supporting the cut for the judiciary. And I, if we have a weak AG's office, there's really almost make no sense to have a strong judiciary. If you have a strong judiciary and you have a weak AG, then it serves nothing but as a choke point where things cannot go through. And I, of course, definitely, I do not support the cut, and on the contrary, probably that we should check where we can cut further and add on, because as it is right now, you know, with the Hauser decision and the stipulation that the AG cannot hire vacancies, cannot fill vacancies until the $500,000 is paid off. I mean, that, in actuality, that was what prompted me to introduce a bill early on, I think that was my first bill, to appropriate that and get that out of the way, so that we need a strong prosecution arm of the government of Guam, in order to realize, really, the full benefit of cleaning out these criminal elements. I even hesitate to speak about how strong the AG or how weak the AG, because we are being watched by some of these unscrupulous people. And they might be emboldened, and, believe me, I mean, if I know that my opponent is weak, it would increase the chances that probably I would not be caught, and if I get caught, probably I will not be prosecuted, and so on down the line. And this is not good news, this is not good message. And, again, I ask that we pass the AG, we pass this part, in order for us to come back and debate for probably an adjustment afterwards, instead of cutting down. And I'd like to share that with my colleagues. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Senator Pinkel?
Good morning.
Well, as you are aware, I think the reason why, you know, the reason why we're here is because of the financial situation of the entire government of Guam, which is really the cash situation that is working, oh, the entire department, the entire government. Oh, Alicia, what relationship does your office have right now with the Department of Revenue and Taxation? You know, and when I say revenue and taxation, they do have a lot of cases that they need to sort of follow up. And, of course, there's the Department of the Government of Guam that do collect the money. And this is where I want to know, really, is there a, what's your relationship, and are you, is your office actually working with them right now?
Yes, Senator, I, along with the Chief Deputy Alberto Tolentino and Chief Prosecutor Phil Tidinko, had, have already met with the Director Art Elogen, as well as his criminal enforcement, tax enforcement representatives. Subsequent to that, I know that our Chief Prosecutor also met, again, with the criminal enforcement arm of the Department of Revenue and Taxation. We met to, again, reestablish our relations, professional relationship with the department to discuss providing legal counsel, work for them, and to work with them on the criminal cases that they have investigated and that we have informed them, that the department, especially the Prosecution Division, wants to take those criminal cases that they've investigated and move forward with them and coordinate our efforts with them.
Do you have anyone in your staff that is, that's specialized in taxation right now?
We do have a, we do have certain staff, yes, that do have tax and accounting backgrounds. We are also exploring an opportunity to hire an attorney who has a tax background as well, and looking at meeting with the Director, again, to try to coordinate either memorandum of understanding or some other agreement or arrangement about providing legal services specific to taxation.
Revenue and tax really is in desperate need of help right now.
That's correct, yes.
Actually, when I say that, I'm saying the entire government of Guam needs some fusion. And, of course, if you see the bill as it is presented right now, on the revenue side, we have amnesty for corporation, amnesty for individual income tax, amnesty for withholding, and amnesty for real estate property taxes. And the reason is that they don't have somebody that can enforce it and bring it to court. And so therefore, they continue to linger after years and after years, and, you know, it becomes a problem. And your department is being hurt, just like everybody else, and just like this branch of government and the executive branch and the judicial. So I have, you know, if there's anything that probably, that you may recommend in terms of providing that type of expertise, and maybe, like you said, some type in this statute that we can put in, that would allow you flexibility in working smoothly with the department, with the Director of Revenue and Taxation in terms of the prosecution of, you know, tax matters. So I think that, you know, we'll entertain that, especially in this bill itself, under miscellaneous. So I would appreciate if you do provide a suggestion whereby, even with the memorandum of understanding, but also, you know, in the law itself, that will require the cooperation or, you know, with your office and the Office of Revenue and Taxation, and especially to fund that individual personnel that is needed.
Senator, just to augment or supplement what the Attorney General has mentioned, in addition to the criminal prosecution, there are civil remedies that can be sought by the Department of Revenue and Taxation that the AG's office wants to participate in and assist. I think the message has been very clear from the AG and with Rev and Tax, that the services of the office can really be a help in trying to collect a lot of these lost receipts, you know, that are just not there because there was not enough. There weren't any individuals who were supposed to prosecute these tax evasion cases or fraud cases, or there wasn't a civil mechanism, an arm in the civil court to go after them civilly. This AG has made it a point to go out to each of these revenue generating departments, like Rev and Tax, like Public Works, to offer our services to be able to help bring in some of that revenue. And which is why we always make the pitch about recruitment, to get the attorneys to actually staff the office, to be able to accomplish that mission. But with specific regard to Rev and Tax, Senator, these are the efforts that the AG has made, and I think it should behoove the members of the public that, once the office is on board to help Rev and Tax, we will try to expedite and resolve a lot of these outstanding tax issues.
Boy, you know, really what a relief to hear you say that. I'm sure you're saying it on behalf of the Attorney General's Office, that there seems to be a reaching out to help other departments and agencies, not to sort of threaten them or, in other words, to prosecute you because you're doing something wrong. But it's a relief to hear that the AG's office is going out there and say, hey, what can we do to help you? And I'm glad to hear that. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator. The other comment I'd like to add is consistent with, of course, our efforts to try to ensure that we work within our means, given our budget appropriation for 2007. When we talk to some of these agencies, we are, of course, exploring federal grant opportunities with them, because certain agencies do have federal grant monies that support the hiring or retention of, or assistance in paying for the cost of an assistant attorney general to assist them specifically in their particular area. So those are the types of discussions we are also having, so that we can ensure we utilize this much of our various funding sources and not impact the local or general fund.
Senator Lohan, you had a point... Senator Lohan, you had a point of information.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think I found my co-author for Bill 82, Speaker Minko.
Thank you very much. Although I do support the fact that we need attorneys to aggressively go after the non-payers of taxes, Bill 82 stresses just that, actually, to go out in the open market, to put in $100, $100,000 bids, so we can go out in the open market and sell these unreceivable taxes, basically, to do that. And again, I'm in, I'm in complete support of the fact that we need to aggressively go after these non-payers of taxes, but simultaneously, we have to work on the fact that we need to collect now as well. So, I'm in full support in going out in the open market, put it out in bids, and collect them right offhand, get them off the government's hands at this point. We need money, cash infusion at this point, we need it fast. But any other efforts that the Attorney General's office can supply in order to aggressively collect that, you know, I'd be in 100% support of that. But I think I found my co-author for Bill 82.
All right. Thank you for your point of information. Senator Respecho?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, General.
Good morning.
And good morning to your team from the Department of Law. Your agency is facing a $180,000 cut, and I'd like to just generate some discussion about some past actions of your predecessor, so that we don't have to ever go down that road. I want to know, General, if you quantified how much these frivolous indictments have cost the taxpayers, particularly the ones that you've recently dismissed. You don't have to talk specifically about any cases, but is there a bottom line total since your predecessor's been in office, and every indictment he's pursued, which resulted in nowhere, and which did not result in a conviction, and particularly the ones that you've recently dismissed? Is there a bottom line amount?
I don't have a specific dollar amount, per se. I can tell you that, generally speaking, in any form of prosecution, whether it's a civil case or a criminal case, when we speak about taxpayers' costs, we are, of course, talking about the time and effort that an attorney takes and makes on looking at a particular matter or case, when he or she could be focusing his or her efforts on other cases or issues. We are also looking at the time that either a grand jury or juries that are brought in for trials or potential trials, are, how much time and effort is involved in that. We are looking at the time of the court personnel, the time of the judge, the time and effort of our internal staff. And so, all of those do have a value. And I don't have a specific dollar amount for you, but generally speaking, yes, it does cost taxpayers certainly money.
Is it possible to quantify that amount coming in, more or less?
Yeah, if we spent some time on it, there are ways that you could try to quantify it, certainly.
Would you be able to, just as a general guidance for me, give that number to the legislature, so we could use as a future reference? But I just wanted to give you an opportunity, General, to say that you're certainly going to be more methodical, and you've said that publicly, in how you're going to go about these certain processes.
Yes, Senator. The office is, has full intentions to ensure that, whether it's criminal prosecution or civil prosecution, that, you know, I speak very directly and openly with the deputies in each of the divisions, they have the discretion and control over their divisions, which they should, given those are their particular areas. And we work cohesively as a team, and we make decisions that are based on evidence and legal issues that arise in any given situation.
Thank you. And I also want to thank you for giving Senators a tour of the Justice Building, and for being very open and transparent so far in your tenure. I know you do very well, General. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator.
Senator Ishizaki? Okay, we're just, okay, Section 13, Office of the Attorney General, Department of Law.
Good morning, and thank you very much for this opportunity to talk with the Attorney General and staff.
Good morning, Senator.
And I'd like to pick up on where Senator Rory picked off on the cost to the AG's office, but it's probably be difficult to estimate the cost of your predecessor in the criminal cases and the civil processes that were filed and had to be dismissed or adjudicated with other government costs outside the AG's office even. And it might be difficult to quantify the cost probably of what the defendants incurred in their personal costs for questionable actions that probably shouldn't have risen to the level they were brought up to. So, I'd like to follow with that and request that at least quantify for us the cost of all this frivolous civil actions and the overreaching criminal actions that were done, you know, that exceeded your definition, your requirements of staying within evidence, whether the evidence supports the appropriate criminal action or filings. And, you know, having spent many, many years collectively, all of us, in investigating and putting cases together and indicting, arresting people, and running them through the process of a trial eventually, and I think we should all be guided by good decisions that are based on evidence. And so I appreciate your position on making decisions based on evidence and not other things. So, I'd appreciate the cost analysis on civil and criminal activities that were, probably shouldn't have been done. And then, Dr. Judy and I have talked about modernization of this government, and I see your activities in trying to modernize, like child support activities, and I think we're going to be very supportive. It's just a creative way we got to look at to find monies, federal grants and Austin. And so we appreciate the tour that you took us through. I do have a request, and if you can provide us an update on the modernization link with Guam Police Department. And we had made, when I was Chief of Police, I had made an offer to the Office of the Attorney General to access the police record management system, so that you can access police reports for which cases, for which arrests have been made, or for which are referred to your office for a prosecutive decision. So, I hope you pursue that and give us a status on where you're at on modernization for, because if you link up, I believe you can save a lot of money in, for both agencies and probably the courts.
Yes.
So, you know, I'll pass. I thank you and congratulate you for getting your office back into shape.
Thank you very much, Senator.
Okay, we're discussing Section 13A, 13A, and also Section 14 of the bill itself. Senator Gutters. And the reason why I'm stating that, it's not just so that you can hear my voice, so that, you know, we can actually, you know, target the, you know, the two sections that we're discussing about.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and colleagues, and to the Attorney General's office, Attorney General, attorneys and staff that are here, we welcome you. Just a couple things. The cut that's proposed, Attorney General, you believe you can live with that? Or it's going to create that hardship?
It is our position, Senator, that we, it would create a hardship on the Department of Law with the proposed cut, and that we are respectfully requesting that there be no cut for the Department of Law. Again, we are stressing that we are working diligently to be fiscally responsible with our 2007 budget appropriation.
You know, Mr. Chairman, as, as an elected position, the Attorney General is responsible for enforcing a myriad of laws in our territory, civil, criminal, and having had the opportunity, along with some of the other senators, to visit the Attorney General's office location, you know, they have some real problems, just physical problems, in their location. And I believe that was sort of cited by the recent visit of the Child Support Chief from the Department of Justice. Am I correct, Attorney General?
That's correct, yes.
And I'm wondering if you're going to be able to rework your physical structure to be able to comply with the security concerns that the Department of Justice representatives indicated were problems that have to be addressed. Have you developed a plan to address those issues?
Just for clarification, Senator, the, it was the Federal Commissioner of the Office of Child Support Enforcement from Washington, D.C., Margot Bean, with her technical support staff, who came to Guam to review our Child Support Enforcement Division at our invitation, especially after the December 2006 audit report that was provided by the Office of the Public Auditor. And then, separate and apart from that, we have met with other federal officials to speak about other security concerns and issues that you've mentioned. What we have done is, we have, again, trying to be, work within our budget and exploring other opportunities, federal grant opportunities, is we have looked at, and are exploring, and have applied for federal grant opportunities to address security concerns within the office. And so, we have actively made efforts in that, in that respect, yes.
Very good. Well, another question with reference to your fiscal facilities, are you folks up to date in having your rent payments processed to the landlord?
We have communicated with the Department of Administration. It's our understanding that the documentation, that we've submitted our documentation, prior to our coming in, there was a, I believe, an assignment of the lease that was required. And so we took care of that when we came on board, and have basically submitted all of the required paperwork that needs to be processed. It is our understanding, however, that not all of the actual rent payments have been made to the landlord.
Okay. Well, I'm just concerned that you folks don't face possible expulsion from your facility, and these are some of the issues that have to be looked at in terms of taking away any monies from you. Now, in addition, I want to pick up on what Senator Respecho said and Senator Ishizaki said regarding cases that were brought forth, criminal cases that were brought forth in the past, that were, in some ways, looked upon as really malicious and created quite a disservice to the accused. And although Senator Respecho has asked for some breakdown of monies as to what these prosecutions cost the government, your office and Senator Ishizaki expanded it to include other offices of the government that may have incurred expenses. I want to look at it from the perspective of the accused individuals and ask your office, do those folks have any remedies with respect to the Gov Guam Claims Fund, to file a claim against the government for malicious prosecution? Would there be any basis for them to do that? And if they did that, how would that be handled by your office? To recover attorney's fees and things of that nature.
Right. If I could, Senator, just generally speaking, certainly any defendant who has been formally charged, if he or she wishes to explore some recourse or action to collect attorney's fees or other types of damages, per se, for what they, he or she may feel is malicious prosecution, is something that they can address with their, with their legal counsel that have represented them. And if I could just have a moment and
Sure.
...just confer with Pat Mason, our civil litigation deputy.
We have a second recess.
Thank you.
Okay, Senator, I believe your question then relates to the Claims Act and bringing an action against an individual under the Claims Act for such things as malicious prosecution, something of that nature. The Claims Act only covers negligence. Sovereign immunity under both the Organic Act and the Claims Act allows a waiver for negligent torts and contracts. So you could not bring an action against the government for that type of a tort, because that's an intentional tort rather than a negligent tort. Now, as to the individual, you could certainly bring a suit against an individual, and it would depend on whether they had immunity. Now, I think there's prosecutorial immunity, and there's also immunity from, of any government individual if they did not act in good faith within the scope of their duties. They have a defense if they acted in good scope within, good faith within the scope of their duties. And often, the government would defend that person if that's the case. If that's not the case, then the individual's really on his own, and a suit could be brought against that individual. But that would not be under the Government Claims Act.
Okay, now, and just looking at this, because this is a very important matter, many, many individuals have found themselves in this circumstance, where they were accused, indicted, brought to court, had to hire attorneys at great personal costs, almost losing their homes, their families giving up so much so that they could have an attorney, knowing full well that they hadn't committed a crime, and later, because of common sense prevailing at your office, seeing those charges withdrawn. They're essentially left out in the cold. We have one individual, I'm not going to mention his name, he's actually here as part of testifiers for the agency he represents, who was a victim of this, and spent over $25,000 for an attorney, who is in debt, will continue to be in debt for many years to come because of malicious prosecutions. And I just feel that this government, aside from being ashamed of itself, must take some responsibility for what happened. Now, if the Claims Fund is not the vehicle, and attorney, if you're saying that, you have to prove first that the government representatives that were involved in this activity did so maliciously, and only then could the individual perhaps file a suit, a civil suit, you know, that's not really going to happen. Because no government official or representative is going to admit that they did something maliciously. And the end result is the person that was accused will not be able to recoup any of the costs. This reminds me of a fascism state, and it scares me. Because conceivably, any senator in this room could be accused of something, brought to court, never having done anything wrong. This reminds me of a fascism state, and it scares me, because conceivably, any senator in this room could be accused of something, brought to court, never having done anything wrong, incur significant costs, and, you know, once you have your name smeared all over the newspapers, it's very hard to clean that up, even if the case was thrown out of court. So, I bring this forward because I'm very pleased that your office is very careful and cautious and proper in how you're handling cases that come to you. But I also think this government has almost forgotten its responsibility to those that were maliciously accused and charged and paraded before the courts and the media. So, I have strong feelings about that. I'm going to pursue this, Mr. Chairman, in another way, perhaps by legislation. But I want to thank the Attorney General's office for giving me some guidance, at least on the Gov-Guam Claims Fund. If that's not the vehicle, then there should be another vehicle. It's not the money part of it, it's the recognition that these people were wronged. That's what I think we owe these individuals. Now, on another matter, before I get away from this, it's on the section.
I just wanted to bring you back to.
Yes, of course.
13A and Section 14.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I have a suggestion.
I'd just like to say that, you know, since times of the essence and many of these things, if we can.
Of course.
I do understand the questions, and of course, it's very interesting, but please sort of.
Well, you know, Mr. Speaker, we could have forgotten all of this if we just took my motion on Monday, which was to accept the Governor's cuts minus those that we felt strongly about. We could have avoided all of this stuff.
We'll be coming back, yes.
All right. Now, anyway, Attorney General, a suggestion you might want to consider, and of course, it may require legislation, to help you cover some of your manpower needs and womanpower needs. In talking to some of the other agencies that have testified before us, they're indicating they have a shortage of personnel for certain kinds of things, sort of routine kinds of things. And I was thinking that perhaps what we can do is look at creating a new category of workers that involve college students who are willing to give so many hours a week of their time to various agencies of government of Guam in exchange for their tuition and textbooks being paid. Like, they could come into the Attorney General's office, maybe work 15 hours a week, and help with some of the routine kinds of things that need to be done that don't require security checks and things of that nature. I think this would be helpful to your office, to the Police Department, and to other entities that are experiencing clerical kinds of shortages or routine kinds of shortages, even data entry kinds of duties with computers, you know. So, I'd like you to look at that, and if you have some suggestions on how we might be able to approach this as legislation, it would be great for the students, they could learn more, they could also deal with their tuition costs and books costs, and do a more formal internship as part of this process. So, whatever input you can provide would be greatly appreciated. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Attorney General.
Thank you. Any more comments on Section 13 and 14? If none, okay, I'd like to thank the Attorney General and your staff for being here and for, you know, responding positively in many notes, of course. There's some requests that were made by the Senators here, and if you can just provide, you know, those information. Oh.
Are we leaving? I just wanted to have some, just one question. When you sent out your allotment request, is it done monthly or biweekly? Monthly. Now, the allotment request, is that tied to your actual requirement to meet the obligations for that month, or is it based upon dividing the budget by 12?
Our understanding, Senators, to meet the requirements for that month.
Okay, so it's basically your cash requirements. It's what you're going to pay is what you request during that allotment.
That's our understanding.
And that's identified. So, basically, you're doing a cash flow request. Could we get that? I mean, could we, so that we can just, I just want to be able to compare your cash flow requests and requirements versus the budgeted request and requirements. I think that would be so helpful. So, it's not an extra document, I just wanted to establish that it's not something else that you'd have to prepare specially, but it's basically your normal request for that month, okay?
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you very much, Attorney General, and thank you, thanks to your staff. So, you're now excused.
Thank you very much.
Okay. I'll take about a minute recess to get the executive branch to, and the Governor's office to be ready for Section 15. And, okay, we have a recess.